But you didn't, did you? This is March 20th, 2014. This is the Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals. If you're not here for zoning board of appeals matters, you're in the wrong room. Calling the meeting to order, it's 7:20-ish on the clock and we have a quorum. This is the zoning board of appeals, Thursday, March 20th, 2014, Littleton Town Offices, Room 103, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. And I'm calling to order this meeting. We'll start with administrative matters. And our first hearing is a scheduled hearing for 7:25. So I think we can knock off a couple of administrative matters. We have elections of officers, we usually do in March of every year. We have old minutes and we have accounts payable. Shelley, do you want to start with the accounts payable, please? You don't have anything. We had an email back and forth today about a peer review fee and you got my email back on that. So that's exactly where you thought it was. Okay. Minutes, we have passed minutes. Does anyone want to do those and have comments to them?
Let's do that.
Okay. So let's start with...
November 21st?
Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't at that meeting, but one thing, a comment I have and a question. The first sentence about Chair Gould handled the revised application for the board. Then it just said the revised application form will be voted next meeting. Was there any discussion or revisions or anything else at that point? Or did you just put it on hold? The application form that we were talking about and everything else. And you came up, they came at the meeting, was there any discussion?
No, because we were waiting for you to return.
All right, then it should be so noted, no discussion?
Okay. So we should pick that up. Let's schedule that, agenda that for the next meeting.
Oh, no, because in the December, it says that we reviewed it, made comments and amended it and voted it in.
And then voted it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did vote it. Okay.
Okay. So that's the only thing that, because I wasn't at the hearing, I don't know if anybody else got anything on that.
No, we just raised it and... You know what happened is my staff printed this out for me, but it was two-sided and I'm missing my other side. So let me help, let me just look. Okay. So just with that one amendment, no discussion. Okay, Shelley? Okay. Any other comments to the November meeting? A little behind on our minutes.
And only the people who were here can make motion or a second.
Okay, so we have Gould, Yates, Cantino, Bell and Stewart. Motion to accept the minutes as revised by Bill Fransworth?
So moved.
So moved. Can you, Rod, can you do it?
Rod, okay.
Yeah, you were here.
You know, only the four people can be voting on it.
Second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor to adopt the minutes as revised?
Aye.
opposed, none? Okay. November's a good.
Shelley, no, there was only four voting members on that?
I heard my name mentioned, so I thought.
We'll move to the minutes of December 12th. Most of that was the Omni.
Omni.
Yep.
On this, in the paragraph regarding Omni, which starts petition of David Hale, they talk about host community agreement, the H, C and A should be capitalized. It is a specific. Same as the subsidized housing inventory should be capitalized. Also too, where we, the next paragraph now is that ask the board for question, the comments. I think it can leave out the word member in front of everybody's name because otherwise you should differentiate between member and alternate member.
Okay.
So that's just kind of all the way through.
Okay.
We get in the second page where it gets down several paragraphs to member Cheryl Hollinger stated that the proposal a huge change from what was approved. Then you got Mr. Hale responded that the February 21 deadline does not impact. Somehow that's out of, the two statements don't go there. And then the next statement somehow it should be, no, it just doesn't follow, it kind of jumps around.
I took a sentence out because it was...
You're going to be careful.
...to their head and I didn't think.
You're going to be careful. You've got to be careful because it disconnects.
It's a tattoo, right?
And then that's one of the reasons for the modification, that probably should flop with the Mr. Hale statement.
Okay. I'll reword that.
So Hollinger stated that the proposal is a huge change from what was approved. And then Hale answered that the reason for the modification is that in marketing the property, a lot of investors have stated it's not feasible. And then...
Again, we're dropping out, no all the...
Just take out the Hale comment about the deadline doesn't impact, it doesn't need to be there. Okay. Go ahead.
Then we keep going, still dropping out the member or whatever else. Next, as we go, I don't know if it's the same one or, next paragraph. First that's member John Cantino, about six lines down or so where it just says bill, that should be changed. And then the only other comment I have was at the very end, "Motion to approve by William Myersworth to adjourn the meeting, second by Jeff Yates." I know Alan started to second it, but he's not a member of the board.
Oh, right.
He has a full membership.
Right.
And so Jeff actually made the motion.
Good thing you keep track of that stuff. So that's two sets of minutes, that's great, Bill.
Right there. Anybody else?
I just had one little typo. First page, third paragraph. The units will be modeled based, built to suit without the...
Has anything happened over on that project? I saw the excavators and everything moved on site and some signs went up.
Rebuilding permit applications.
Three building permit, that's exciting. Four single families.
For, yeah, the 40A side.
For the 40A side.
People have been coming in that had gone to open houses on 40B side asking some questions.
Excellent. I also heard that the advertising is happening and it's pretty aggressive. Yes, we can, I'm just curious.
On this one?
Yeah.
You going to close this one out yet?
I know.
Okay.
Any other comments on the December minutes?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve them as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I know we've got an audience now, so we have to... All those in favor signify.
Who's the fifth?
One, two, three, four. Who was here?
Cheryl's missing and Alan Rudd, Mike and Patrick. Anyone?
Rudd. Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I think, the only comment I have is on January 6th, where you have the paragraph about best discussion of the subcommittee, that would be the Jeff and Alan subcommittee, whatever that title was, just indicate that. Everything else looks good.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. I don't think we need to approve those. And December 19th, that will hold for another meeting.
Yeah. I have the rest of them, pretty much.
Pass that, Shelley? And she got the quote back.
Okay, so the 7:25, we had scheduled 15 Great Road to LLC endorsement of the approval not required plan for lots one, two and three. If everyone recalls, when Omni came in with their changes, what they did was they created three subdivision lots. If I recall correctly, one and two were the two phases of the for sale development units and lot three was the rental unit buildings, the three buildings. And if you all recall, none of these lots have frontage, they were just to distinguish for deed purposes and decision purposes that there were three separate entities, or three separate locations going on here. That's a Mylar plan that needs to be approved at the, needs to be approved in order to be recorded at the registry of deeds. We were told by our consultant that it makes sense to have this board approve it. We are the permit granting authority for any 40B matters. And while it's normal that planning boards approve these plans, since we approved everything else, legal counsel and the consultant, the paid consultant, Ed Marshant, recommended that we do the signing and endorsement of this Mylar plan. So that's here tonight, we're going to pass that around for approval.
It's an approval not required, A and R?
It's an approval not required plan. The reason no approval is required is because it's part of the 40B process that we already approved in the 40B decision, that these three lots could be created. So even though they don't conform to our zoning bylaw, they do conform to the decision that we made as a 40B.
And it needs to be signed by either the planning board or this board, this instance before it can be recorded at the registry of deeds.
So we never get to do this job, but we should have a special pen and everything.
Roland just wanted to get one.
Oh, okay. So that'll be passed around for signature tonight. Now, it is 7:30, so I can move right into the case number 828. Yeah. This is a... Well, let me call Rod for this one. I think if we do it in order, we'll call Ryan Dill, we'll call Rod Patrick and then we'll have...
Thanks. I'm out of practice.
Mark for John Gole. Okay, does that make sense?
So Rod is voting?
Yeah, we'll have Rod as the voting member for FIBA. Okay. Littleton Board of Appeals is conducting a public hearing on Thursday, March 20th, 2014, at the Littleton Town Offices, 37 Shattuck Street, Room 103, to consider the petition of case number 828A, scheduled for 7:30 PM. FIBA Technologies Inc. for a variance for a proposed attached sign at 53 Air Road. Let me just get to that for a minute. Okay, so we'll have the applicant step forward. And you're welcome to drag chairs up and sit and be informal. We're not a particularly formal board here. This is a Mylar right here.
We do have the Mylar.
No, that's the A and R.
15 Great...
No, for 15, I was just...
What?
They should do a Mylar in four places.
So what did you want to go for? Oh, okay. All right. Okay. So proceed, please introduce yourselves and proceed. I'll just tell, I don't know if we have a butters here, I'll just give a quick overview. You present first, we'll then ask the board for any questions or comments, we'll then open it up to a butters and then you have a chance to rebut.
My name is Andrew McFarzey, I'm here on behalf of the FIBA Technologies Inc. with me tonight is John Finn from FIBA and Kevin Leduke from Sunshine Sign. This is a request for a variance based on the fact that FIBA is looking to put in two signs on the face of the building. One sign that is super monumental and is 7 feet 6 inches in height and 16 feet in length. And that has the FIBA logo, which is their business logo that they identify with by the company and they use at all of their locations. And then underneath that are the words FIBA Technology, which that sign in particular is 3 feet 6 inches in height and 50 feet in length. We submit that the variance should be approved for a number of reasons. One, there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, this is an industrial zone. Two, the building is unique in its size. The size of the building is 363, 950 square feet. It's placed on 62.74 acres. If you've been by the building, you can see that it's been newly renovated, it's just been completed in the last several months. And when you drive by it, it's set back and we believe that the sign is necessary for people to be able to identify and locate the building. Additionally, it's FIBA's advertising and the identification of their business, they use the same sign on all of their materials, their letterhead, their other buildings that they have. And the building, well, I went through the set back and it's hard to see. And the total coverage of the sign is less than the first requirement in the bylaw of the 15 percent, so we're asking that the board approve it on the 50-foot second tier. And if you have any questions for Mr. Leduke, he can explain what the material will be made out of or weight or anything like that.
Mr. Fransworth, yeah.
You said it's less than the 15 percent. Have you calculated out the size of the face of the building and what the 15 percent would be?
Of the sign? No, I have not.
Then...
I know that it was less than, but I don't have the calculations with me. I had done it when we did the application, so I knew that we needed the variance based on the 50-foot square foot tier of the bylaw and it wasn't, it was less than the 15 percent.
All right, that would be interesting to have that information, compare it to the total that you're now asking for. If it's substantially less or slightly less or, do you know how much, less than 15 percent?
I believe, and this is pure recollection, that it was about 7 percent.
7 percent, the size of the sign from top...
Based on the, yeah, that was my own calculation.
The bottom and sides to the face of the building. Do you, forgive me for asking this, is the Bretta sign still up there, Bretta? Do you remember what that size was?
100 feet, 10 by 10. That's what we gave.
That was 100 square feet.
We gave the variance for the 10 by 10 sign.
And so yours compares how the 100 square feet compares with, what have you got for calculus?
76 by 16 is 120 square feet, just the FIBA logo.
76 by 16 equals 120 square feet.
And the main sign of 3 foot 6 high by 50 feet is 175 feet, total 295 square feet. That's why I was wondering what the 15 percent would come up to.
You don't have the building size up here.
It's about 360 feet long, 42 by...
360 by 40, which is...
Are you considering the portion that you've renovated or the entire? Do you own the whole building or how does that work?
We do own the whole building.
Okay. Or you just renovated a portion of it?
We, so the area that we've renovated or the base of our business is half of that 300 feet deep, so.
Your business. And then you're going to rent out the rest of the space?
Possibly, or, I mean, it's underwritten if it's not.
So just catch me up here. FIBA is the owner of the property? And the deed here says that it's 5K LLC?
Yeah, that's a real estate.
Arm of FIBA.
That's the real estate holding company.
Okay. And then...
The operating company is FIBA Technologies Inc.
And then, just do something else here. I have, I have had mixed feelings about this. I always thought that the Bretta sign that we gave was too big and we gave them too much, but I felt that way because it was a square sign on a background that was affixed to the building.
And it was very small. Just a breeder and had the...
Yeah, but it seemed to me like this whole big sign board that contained it was big. And this is different to me because it looks like it's just lettering on the brick.
Correct.
It's not going to be a background of a sign board, right? And you're falling, you're falling into this sort of area of measurement because we go from the top to the bottom and we measure it.
Yep.
But it's not really as offensive to me as if it was a sign. The second feeling I had about Bretta was always that even though I felt like it was too big, I felt like it is in the industrial zone and I'm not sure if anyone saw it or could. But my question to you is, why do you need a sign so big? I understand the building sits back, I understand directional signs are important, but it seems to me that your product isn't such that I need to drive along the street and find you, I'm not going to be slowing and impairing traffic while I'm looking for you. If I'm going to your offices, I'm going because we've already had contact by email or whatever and that I already know an address that I'm looking for and my GPS is going to get me there. So tell me why you need to have identification that large from the street.
99 percent of our customers are outside of the state, so this is a new location to them or an unfamiliar territory, so we don't have recurring business that's local or regular. In an ordinary day, we probably have up to 30 visitors from vendors and customers. And the building is pretty far setback on the road. Right now, we don't have a sign. I get four or five calls a day for people trying to find the building without a sign. You know, the lettering would allow someone to, you know, clearly read FIBA Technologies and it's set far back enough that, you know, if it was much smaller, it would be hard to notice or read.
Mr. Fransworth?
The property that FIBA had or still has in Westboro, Route 9, is the size of FIBA Technology, Inc., the same size it was on that building or?
We're actually, we're headquartered in Millbury, at the moment.
Right, but you have the property in Westboro.
We've, well, we've been out of Westboro for almost 15 years now.
Right, but you had, is it not the FIBA Technology sign on the building?
The sign right on Route 9 that is similar to the logo. It's about 5 feet...
But you didn't have the word spelled, though.
We did, on the building.
So my question is, is this the same size as that, larger or smaller? Because I know that area and that sign and how it appeared as you drive by.
This is, this is different than what's on our Westboro building, so.
The logo was changed and, I mean, that was 15 years ago that they left that building.
But what is the size of that sign in Westboro?
That's, what was the size of that? They've been out of Westboro for 15 years.
But signage is generally sized appropriately for vehicle safety.
Right.
Based on the route it's on, visibility and speed of traffic.
Right.
What I'm trying to get at is that, that's a high-speed road. And it sets off the road, not quite as far as this building, but it does set off the road. And the thing is, I know how visible that sign was.
Right.
In comparison to this sign. I guess my next question, and I'm going to ask this, you know, kind of a multiple part, is there any reason for you to get this sign up there now? And could you, because what we ask for a lot of times with signage, to see a prototype of a markup up there. I mean, you can do one without spending a lot of money, just so that we get a feeling and everybody else can get a feel for the sign and see if it's appropriate. Now, I have suggested that in my other profession, before I retired, to sign companies, who actually then when they went and did a markup and the customer all of a sudden says, wait a minute, we don't need it that big. So what I'm asking is, could you do a markup and first of all, in your part, figure out, do you need a sign this big or could it be smaller? And also too, once you set on the size that you really need for the visibility that you need from Route 2A, 110, then we could see it and see if it's appropriate as well.
That's what the engineer attempted to do by drawing that plan, that was drawn by the engineer.
I know, engineers always draw these things, not having the same scope and the same field.
But he did base it on, I mean, I myself have driven by there and driven past there because they didn't have anything. And it is set back and it is set more like in a gully almost, it's down. So I think that...
But it's very visible.
The building?
Yeah.
I mean, I went by and people, they go very fast on that road to the point where...
The point is, I also went by it in two directions tonight and missed it looking for it.
You did?
But the point is, do we need it this big or can it be scaled down? I don't think the board has a real objection, I'm not sure of this, but based on the variance hardships that you described, I don't think the board has a real objection to giving you some relief from our size sign bylaw. But I think that you're asking for the maximum wish list and I'm not sure we're convinced as a board that you need the maximum. That's where we're at at this point. Nobody is denying you, I think, the ear that you need some sign relief.
Especially after the breeder sign that everybody kind of struggled with and we granted, then once it was up, everybody says, wait a minute, it's too big.
It's too big.
And even breeder says, yeah, we could have done smaller once we saw it.
Well, this is smaller than the size of the sign on the Millbury building and the Millbury building is smaller than this building.
And our Millbury building is, the Littleton building is probably set back twice as far, so.
And that's one of the reasons.
And again, I've got to say, I've dealt with sign companies and signing and buildings and everything else quite a bit. And I've seen multiple times where the sign company has actually put up a template or no, just either whether it's on canvas or whatever else. And once the sign is, the prototype is up, both the sign company and the business itself have said, wow, yeah, that's too big, we don't need it too big. I just want to make sure that once everybody sees it, now they agree is that, yeah, it is the right size, it could not have been smaller.
And the way that they came up with the sign area and the sign, they first, based on the Millbury building and the size of their sign, and like we said, that sign is larger, but the building is smaller. Then they determined what they wanted here and what we needed here. And then we tried to fit it in and we realized that there was a request for the variance. Mr. Leduke is from the sign company? It will be...
I think Mr. Leduke and I have done business in the past.
Yes, we have.
Yeah. Oh, he knows what I'm...
But he won't hold that against you, sir.
Oh, he understands what I've just said there.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
No, I have done that in the past, full science and for to drive by to look at the, to the, looking at the building and the signage on the building as a template. But to add to, I've been up in that, I'm not from this area, but I've been to that building site now four or five times. And knowing FIBA's business with tractor trailer trucks and if you're going to miss that ride, if you're going to miss that first right, it is a dangerous road to have the tractor trailer to try to do a turn to get back until FIBA is parked north. So again, with the building being set back that far, it's approximately 400 feet off the road and it is in a gully.
And you're surrounded by industrial, so I'm not that concerned about...
And it's non-lit.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not going to be...
And it's non-lit and it's flat against the building.
A billboard in the evening.
Yeah.
So in my opinion, as a, being in the business for the last 16 years, I think the sign is elegant and I think it fits the size of the building. I think the sign is elegant, and I think it fits the size of the building.
Yeah, and I don't, I sort of, like I said, I had this problem with this big white background sign stuck on the side of the building. But the letters implanted on the building give me a different feeling.
And this siding on the building, it's, I think, and with the color and the contrast, I think for the safety reason with the tractor-trailers going to FIBA's location like John has mentioned, um, and on Two A and One Ten, and you guys are familiar with this, with the lot, you need to drive by the building to get to that next drive. And then you have to go all the way around to come back. And I just think it's a very unsafe for tractor-trailers on that road to miss it and then need to go down Two A and One Ten to find a turnaround to come back. Now you come across the street to, to turn in.
So, let me ask the rest of the board. Any other questions, or does anybody wanna?
What, what will be the color of the lettering, the FIBA Technologies?
It is a, it's a PMS blue color. It's a sapphire blue. And I wanna say.
And you, is it similar to that, you put these hoods over the doors, is it similar to that color? It's a blue color that, you know, or, you know, the, the new doors you put in?
Yeah.
They're, they're blue. Is it similar to that color, or?
It matches the door color, yeah.
Okay. One concern I have is that, you know, will there be other tenants of the building who will also want a gigantic sign? And it may be that we do not grant any further gigantic sign for this. This is a gigantic sign, fifty feet. This room, I, this room is maybe fifty feet. So, this, this sign is as long as this room.
Well, they own the entire building.
Yes.
So, I mean, you can even put it as a part of the leases or whatever. I mean, we have all the leases for anyone who's a current tenant. They have been, the, most of the tenants have been.
Well, we allow multi-tenant signs, but it, we wouldn't probably grant a further variance for, you know, for a sign.
And I don't think that FIBA's gonna allow somebody to put up a sign that's closer or any bigger to their sign.
I like Bill's suggestion of a, I mean, you don't have to put FIBA Technologies, but just a banner or some kind of marker, even maybe a, you know, fifty feet. It's unprecedented in our town. We have so many of these hearings with signs. And they're so, you know, we whittle away inches and this and that, and now we're in here with a fifty-foot sign. So, I think it's, I'm, I'm in agreement. It's a gigantic building. Clearly, the, you know, the, the zoning wasn't really written with this kind of building in mind. But it's a big sign.
John?
No, I agree with Jeff's.
So, you wanna all see a markup?
I'd like to see, even a white banner, just to get a feel of scale of that sign.
Just do a vinyl banner?
Yeah, I don't need letters or anything.
And we can do that, but again, the vinyl banner's not gonna give you the look of the individual stud-mounted letters.
But it'll give an idea of scale.
It's gonna give you an idea of the length and the scale, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna fold.
I, I don't think we're going to design your sign.
You can do.
We just wanna scale.
You can do a vinyl banner, back to the color of the building and the letters in blue. And that gives us the idea of the scale of the size of the sign on that face and how visible it is from the road. Now, I've driven that road many times. I used to work in that building. That was years ago, but I used to work in that building. Um, you know, I, I still would like to see the size of it and see if it's appropriate. 'Cause my feeling offhand, knowing it's down a little gully and where it is and everything else, it's, it's still visible.
Right.
Two quick questions. Where along here is this sign gonna be? On the front of the building?
On the, on the front portion.
Right, but whereabouts, down here?
Uh, it would be over here.
Okay. And is the sign gonna be eliminated?
No.
Okay, my first thought was, that doesn't look bad. But then when Jeff said this room's fifty feet, I just.
I think the room is actually about fifty-five feet.
I just counted this, if those ceiling tiles are two-by-two, it's forty-two feet.
Oh, okay.
And that's maybe about three and a half feet height there. So, you're looking at that extending, and suddenly that looks off, it hit me as it being awfully big. So, I think a markup is appropriate.
But if you did the three-six by fifty, which is really all there is here, forget the logo at the top for a minute, you're talking about two-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet against a fifty-foot sign by law, but on a building that's gotta be easily ten times what most buildings are, easily.
Oh, I, I don't, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
The IBM sign that we approved, well off the road and everything else, is not that big.
It's also there.
And you can, you can just see it.
The IBM sign is lit.
Yeah.
So, that's a little different than.
Yeah, but there's a big difference because you can tell it's IBM because it's a high-tech building with a million cars in the parking lot.
Not from four-ninety-five.
No, but they, but yeah, they, you can see it from four-ninety-five.
You could, you could distinguish the letters.
No, it's, it's a very.
The point is you can read the letters.
But also, isn't that one lit up?
That's the.
'Cause I've been by and it's still lit up.
You can still read it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, what's your, what's a timetable going on here? Do you have time to post, to continue till the next meeting and put up a markup of some sort that we can see?
Would you say time?
When's the next meeting?
On what?
Well, it's usually the third week of the month. Do we have it scheduled yet? Do we have any applications?
Uh, yes, we do have one. So, it's May?
April.
Uh, I'm sorry, April seventeen.
And I think you'll find that if you do a markup, it's gonna be less offensive than it feels like looking at it here.
The other thing, sure, there are some butters here.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask. I'm gonna ask in a minute, yeah. I'm just asking what your willingness is to put, to continue on them.
And I think Bill brought up a good point, that when they start putting the markup up, they may realize it doesn't have to be.
Themselves, yeah. So, do we have a butters to this property that wanna be heard? Sir?
All of us here, I, I'd like to see, is there, let me take a look at the door.
Oh, come step forward, certainly. Uh, did you, did you sign in at the door? Did you, all of you sign in at the door? Pass something around afterwards, and then I'll take your names before you speak.
Now, how does this compare in size to the one in Millbury?
Excuse me, before you speak, could I ask you to identify yourself for the record?
Sam Stony, one-eighty-three New Estate Road.
Sam Stony, one-eighty-three, thank you.
Um, how big is this compared to the, the sign, not in Millbury, in, uh, yeah, it is in Millbury.
Yeah, Millbury.
So, have you, have you seen our property?
Well, I got it pulled up here, and boy, it seems pretty innocuous to me.
This, this logo right here, that's actually larger than this logo.
Yeah, the one that we're proposing is small, and then one's in Millbury.
And this building's significantly larger than this building, isn't it?
It is, correct.
I don't know if you guys wanna see this.
Yes, I'd like to.
But it's, it really.
Just in my opinion, again, in it, when you're looking at something like this and you put it out in space, it's gonna look like a poster stamp. It really is. It's not, this is not gonna be overwhelming at all. It's gonna be a posters, when you drive by that building with the setback from the road, it's gonna look very small.
The only size large enough to be recognized by the.
Rule of thumb, Bill, is a three-inch letter can be seen from fifty feet in a signage street. So, and that is just standing still. That's not a moving target. So, when you calculate this somewhere around thirty-four to thirty-six inches, it fits the, the eyesight of a vehicle bone by.
Right.
And, and again, in my opinion, it's gonna be a poster stamp, honestly, but it's not gonna be.
Could you tell me what the size of this Millbury sign is?
Um, it's approximately, that's approximately five feet by ten feet.
And the size of that building face, can you estimate that?
I don't, I don't know.
That one, uh, that's about, that's about sixty feet wide.
So, you're telling me that that sign is fifty square feet on a building that's sixty by?
I think it might, again.
It's twenty-sixty by thirty, the, the height there. And if you look relative, this has one overhead door.
This has three overhead.
And this, and this, enough for one overhead, please.
That's, and that's, uh.
And Mr. Stony, you're saying that you've seen that sign?
I have, I've just pulled it up on Google, and, as, as a sense of scale, as he was talking about it, similar to. The other thing, it's funny, 'cause I sort of came here to, thinking I was gonna be arguing against this, but I, I don't have any problem with it.
You don't have any problems?
When I, when I look at this, I think it's important to realize that this is only this much of the front of the building.
Correct, I think so.
Really, this is gonna be tiny.
What did you think of the Brita sign? 'Cause the same thing happened with Brita. We thought, gee, it'll disappear in the size of the building. And then it didn't. It stuck out a little bit.
Maybe it stuck out a little bit, but I don't think out of scale for that industrial part or that location, and this is, this is definitely smaller.
And beside you, I have the.
Yeah.
Hi, Claire.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Pat Smith, one-seventy-five.
And what do you think, Pat?
Um, I don't find it offensive at all. I'm happy that it's on the building and not a freestyle, you know, standing sign.
That was my concern.
Yes, mine too. And, um, as Sam just said, compared to the size of the entire building, this is such a small space.
You're one-seventy-five?
New Estate.
New Estate, that's what I got.
I'm Don Smith, Pat's husband. Um, we were living on New Estate Road when that building was built by Sandville. Uh, it's so much better a building than has ever been down there. And we've seen all kinds of things come and go. Uh, I have more problem with the number of signs already on the property, all, all kinds of signs. I think this is fine. I have no problem with this. I, I think it's well proportioned, given that it's over, uh, the three, um, the three doors, bay doors, and it fits with the, the nice new front that they put on that building.
Which is lovely.
Uh, we have no problem with the looks of it.
I have one more butter.
I'm Barbie Polly, one-seventy-four New Estate. I'm sorry, Barbie Polly, P-O-L-L-Y. And, um, I think it looks pretty good. I mean, I think I agree with William. I would like to see a markup because it's kind of, to me, I'm not an architect, so I'd rather see it visually. I understand, I've only, only been there ten years, not fifty, um, but.
Not a county yet.
I can understand that improbably, you know, the size of that, coming over that hill in the depth back is perhaps okay, but I don't know. I can't really visualize it because I think the building, I don't know if it goes further over there a little bit.
It's just the building.
Well, with the dog, you know, with Joe and I, yes. Yeah, so it's hard for me to really visually, visualize it. The other, one, um, consideration I had thought of, you were talking about the trucks going by it. I know there's signage in front of the building, and it seems like there's a lot of things out there. I don't know if you were considering on changing that marquee or, you know, that might help as far as, you know, trucks going by or not seeing the cutoff. And I would like to see that as well because that might be a distraction. I don't know. Or it might be helpful.
To remove that, or?
No, well, it seems like there's a lot of, um, names on the marquee. Um, but, you know, you were talking about the trucks going by, so conceptually, is that good for a truck with this sign as well?
Actually, she's asking you if you change your freestanding sign in the front, and you had a more prominent display on your freestanding sign, but within the confines of the zoning bylaw and the size of the zoning bylaw, would that assist you in the truck traffic identification?
It would, but in the industry, we call those wayfinding signs. And for a business like FIBA, you're gonna have shipping and receiving, and then you're gonna have regular corporate visitors to the office. And I know there's a, a road they're thinking about adding or changing in that area. Again, I'm not familiar with the whole area, but it, to, to see where, where John would like the traffic flow to go with the tractor-trailer trucks and how to get to his corporate office right away than the shipping and receiving, going around the whole building, coming back down the side of the building, have to go in front of the building, and then dashing up to the, the three bay lot.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the shipping and receiving directional signs are directional signs interior to the project, and we don't really have jurisdiction over that. So, what we're talking about is.
I'm just answering her question, the, like, showing something on the street for a wayfinding, what we call wayfinding signs or traffic control signs in the industry, where this is a, basically a branding main ID sign for the property. So, there is different sign levels of sign types that you wanna say. You know, there's traffic control signs for reserved parking, do not enters, speed limit signs, more like the traffic controls. And then the wayfinding signs in the industry is more for directional wayfinding for shipping, receiving, for visitors, um, on a property like this.
I guess, um, from the very, just from the variance point of view, you know, you have to justify variance by some characteristic of the site.
Thank you.
I don't, I, you know, from the point of view of identifying for trucks, it's not the right place for that, because the trucks are already, have to be beyond the entrance to this. That's fine, because the.
I mean, our entrance would be distribution drive and not.
Oh, fine, okay, okay, that's good. And that's probably good for the New Estate people, that the entrance isn't, you know, at the end of their street. Uh, so, so then it becomes just the fact that this is just a gigantic building. And, you know, is the scale a bit appropriate to this gigantic building? You know, it's an existing building, it's always been there. And that's what would persuade me.
What, what I'm hearing my board say is that they would like a markup. And I would rather defer to you, if you have the time, to let, to do the markup and spend money to do the markup. It's an expensive sign. You might as well get it right the first time.
Correct, there's no money in redo work.
Right, so I'd rather have you do the markup to satisfy the board's concerns. What I said to you, I think you've all heard loudly and clearly, your neighbors don't seem to be offended by the size and the scale. The board doesn't seem to be offended by the fact that you need a variance. And what we wanna be sure is that we're not giving you a variance for more size than is warranted by the size of the building. So, if we could see the scale and do a sidewalk and see a markup, I think you'll have an easier time with us voting this.
We don't even need to do a sidewalk. Once it's off.
Once it's up, it's up.
Two weeks prior to our next hearing, we're gonna.
That's what I was just gonna ask, how you'd work that. So, you would see it prior to the hearing and then?
Yeah, just put it up, and we'll, and we'll all drive by it. And, and that way, I think.
Would you like both sections up, or would you just like the letter?
I don't particularly care about the second section. If, it seems to me the second section is more graphic and artwork than anything. And the size of that doesn't bother me.
The logo, the logo.
It's the FIBA technology stretched across the front. I think I'd be satisfied to see that. I think the neighbors would be, and then we can all sort of visualize what the second little piece above would be with the, the building in the three dimension.
No, my whole concern about this is not the scale of the sign to the scale of the building. Yeah, that's not my concern. My concern is the scale of the sign needs to be large enough, but not too large, oversized, such that it's visible from the road, or reasonable from the road for the speed of the traffic going by. Okay, I mean, you could have a big building that's the size of Family Park, but you wouldn't need a sign that's fifteen percent of that, that wall area. Your building, well, obviously, glass and everything else. So, yeah, it's a big front, but you don't need a very large, oversized sign just to recognize the warning. And that's why I think with a markup, you can get a feel for it. And you should drive by both directions or whatever else, really noticing and being able to read the letters to understand where the size is, the sign is.
What would it take you to do? Something you could do?
I could get it. I have that up, producing up within two weeks.
Okay.
So, I could have it up in the first week of April.
That would be great.
So, that's something I gotta talk to John.
Yeah, we haven't actually finished the siding on the building, so that, that's probably another two to three weeks out, so.
I don't think we need to see the siding.
Okay, so they literally can hang it up over there in the process of completing it?
I can put it up on the concrete, yeah. But it's not gonna give you the same look, 'cause there is a concrete face that FIBA is putting up a nice almond, aluminum siding over the concrete face.
By the way, your new facility is wonderful compared to what we've been looking at from the west.
They're actively working on the siding, and they have stayed and stuff up, so.
Which would be easier for us to go up and put it up with the staging now. So, something that I would talk to John about, and we could, we could get it up.
Should we notify the board once it's up?
Definitely two weeks before the eight, seven.
If you would let our admin know, she'll email all of us, and we'll all take a ride by and see it.
Okay.
Um, and I wish we had an earlier date for you. The other one's been scheduled.
I mean, they could still give the sign up, have it up for two weeks so people can see where the business is and everything else. where the business is and everything else.
April 17th, correct?
Did you publish it yet?
Yep.
What's the week, what's the week before April 17? Do we have any vacations in April? April 17th is fine.
That's fine.
Okay. April 17th.
Because it gives them the time to finish.
Okay, let's put you on, I'll put you on 7:15 again first.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a continuation motion, please?
I make the motion, we continue the hearing for 53 Air Road sign variance for Fever technology to April 17, 2014 at 7:15 PM.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I need a second first. I'm sorry, second?
Second.
All those in favor, sitting across there saying aye.
Aye.
And you'll be here, you'll need your...
Yeah.
I think I could also bring some more pictures of our Millbury facilities, the lettering here is identical, same size, so.
For one, I'm not really interested in the other facility. My concern is that facility, that location.
No, I think what he meant is just so you can see the actual lettering base versus a mark-up.
I don't think any of us have a real objection to what you're trying to do. I think we just want to reassure ourselves for the sake of the community and for the sake of enforcing the zoning bylaw that this size is necessary for your variance.
Thank you.
This is yours.
Good to see you again.
Like this phone's...
True.
Did they give us a day?
Rough as two weeks.
So they're gonna...
I first thought, then looking at that picture, fine. But then trying to envision the scale of this room, suddenly it sounds kind of large.
Okay, we're running a little behind. The time is 8:10, and I'll call to order case number 829A, scheduled for 7:45 PM. Case of Ryan Dill for a special permit or a variance for a proposed addition at Seven Neshoba Trail. And I guess you've had a little practice watching us. You'll present first, it's fairly informal, we don't bite.
Yep.
And then the board will ask you questions, and I'll open it up to our butters and neighbors, and we'll see what's right. Okay, the second one, Patrick, I'm gonna ask you to be the voting member on this one. The voting alternate, please.
Over, Rachel and Ryan Dill. So we moved into Seven...
Can I just ask the room to quiet down in the back? There's places to go to talk.
We just moved into Seven Neshoba Trail this last fall, and we were here to see if we could get a variance for a small entryway on the front of our house.
Various for special permit?
I guess it's called special permit slash variance.
So let me just, let me just do a little procedural thing. Charlotte, do you know if you advertised this as a special permit slash variance? The application was made for a special permit, but it was advertised both ways, so nobody's disadvantaged by allowing you to amend your application right now to include variance. And we have a comment from the building inspector, and he thinks it should be a variance. So we can discuss whether that's what the board thinks or not, but let's just amend it to cover all bases.
Let's, let's deal with it one way or the other, because there's a substantial difference between a special permit and a variance.
Well, we'll deal with it one way or another, but let them start procedurally by amending because we've advertised it both ways. We always ask the applicant to apply both ways.
No, we advertise it both ways, but it's applied as a special permit. Let's deal with it as a special permit. If in the discussion we find it should not be a special permit but should be a variance, then we can shift it. We don't need the applicant to, you know, I really think properly it is a special permit if it's not a variance. Based on recent court case, well, four years ago.
It doesn't really matter either way.
It does.
So I don't, no, I said it doesn't really matter either way, so I'll let you, I'll let you foretell. If we need to shift it later, we'll shift it later. So go ahead with your discussion.
Okay, so currently, our front of our house, that's about just under 25 feet from the road, is why we came in to propose to do a seven-foot wide by five-foot deep mudroom to an enclosed entryway. We currently do not have any closets. When you open the front door, you see the stairs right away. I think you guys all have the floor plan. Put it on the place to put shoes or coats and such, so.
One small bedroom closet on the first floor.
He could do this for a next sketch.
Yeah. We have it in color.
Can we deal with a couple of procedural things on this?
Certainly.
Okay, first of all, I had raised a question a couple of days ago. I know it's been resolved, but for the record, on the application, petition of signature, Ryan Dill.
Yeah.
Under it, a property owner, you sign Ryan Dill, but the deed and everything is made out, and the assessors made it out, as old as is Christopher R. Dill.
Yeah. Ryan's my middle name, I go by Ryan. I can legally sign either way.
All right. Again, dotting i's, crossing t's. When I first saw this, and I called Shirley, I says, wait a minute, is this the same person or not? Okay, from the board's information, there has been inserted into our package tonight a statement by Ryan saying that he is the lead Christopher Ryan Dill. That clears that up, so we don't have that problem. Also, two submitted with tonight's, with the application, we have a floor plan. My question is, what is existing now? So in other words, what are you going from what you have now to what you're adding on?
Well, you can see the proposed entryway, that's five by seven in the bottom here. So it's...
Now, it's just a stone, it's just a stone step. You literally opened the door, which opened...
It's a four-foot landing.
Into the house, onto a stone landing. I have a picture on my cell phone if you want to see it.
Let's break clear here, the lighter, the lighter hatched line is what's existing, right? And the darker line is the proposed seven-foot addition.
Yeah, exactly.
It's clear.
Okay.
So you're, the house now is 24 foot, 24.7 feet from the road.
Yeah.
Exactly. Where'd you get that dimension?
Well, 19.7 plus five.
Oh, you're adding them, okay. Okay. And then the lot is non-conforming in that it doesn't satisfy the requirements of 40,000 square feet. The frontage is non-conforming because it's 100.23 feet instead of 150 as required by the bylaw.
It's on a corner, though, does that change the...
Yeah, the setbacks change on the corner.
Well, the bylaw footnote says that you can only count that, or certain percentages down to a few feet, not more than 15 feet. So at a moat at 115 feet, it's still less than 150.
It's not the frontage that changes, the setback.
By having a second street, you can take a percentage, and if you have not more than 15 feet added on too.
Okay, so it's still non-conforming?
It's still non-conforming.
In the frontage? And we have a front setback non-conformity, I think, because I don't know what the adjacent properties do. If the abutting property is as close to the road as this one, that's not a non-conformity, but it's not showing on this plan.
It is, it is just about as close.
The steps and everything are just about as close?
Mm-hmm.
So it's possible we have a front setback non-conformity, but also it's possible that we don't. It looks like your sideline setbacks are fine and your rear setback is fine. So we do have a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And you're allowed, you are allowed by special permit to change, alter, or extend a pre-existing non-conformity, but if you're making any more non-conformity than already exists, you have to come before the zoning board for a special permit.
For any changes to the structure.
And so I think I agree with Bill's initial statement, which is that he believes this is a special permit request and not a variance request.
And up to about, probably about four years ago or so, there was a mixed opinion for the whole statute and everything else, whether, anytime you created a new non-conformity, it was a special permit or it was a variance. There was a court case that came out, and it made very clear by DHCD and the state zoning people, that on a non-conforming lot or a non-conforming structure, anything that you do to it, add on, make a new non-conformity or anything else, that still is handled as a special permit, not as a variance. Now, my whole opinion was changed when I saw that case and that mandate that came down from the state.
Well, in any event, I think we have a special permit here. Now, we have, the building inspector is here, but generally, unless there's a real objection, we just read into the record his comments. And he comments that applicant is seeking a dimensional variance to construct a seven-by-five mudroom on the front of the single-family dwelling, encroaching on the required setback of 30 feet. Once constructed, the remaining setback from the property line will be 19.7 feet, which is what the applicant's presented, and he writes no further comment. Do we have any butters to this property? No. Okay, so, under a special permit review, all we have to find is that the proposed new non-conformities are no more detrimental than the existing non-conformities. And so, board comments, questions, concerns, any of them?
I have no. I have no comments.
No?
Sure.
Patrick, no. Okay, do you want to make a motion to close?
Any butters?
I asked.
Out.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Let Patrick second that one. All those in favor of closing the hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. The hearing is closed. Anybody want to make a motion and have a discussion on this?
I make a motion that we grant a special permit under section 173-10B1 to Seven Neshoba Trail to put on a enclosed addition of 5 feet deep by 7 feet wide at the front of a property. And the findings will show all the non-conformities as has been previously stated.
Second to that motion, please.
I'll second it.
Patrick seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None, hearing none. Your special permit's granted. You, there is a 20-day appeal period, but with a special permit, you can take your chances and not wait for the 20 days. The building inspector can grant your building permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
I'll write the decision.
You'll write that one?
I got a template for these, these all of them.
Thank you. This is Adam Street.
Today's copy, correct?
Okay, so you want to call the next one, please, so I can stand out?
No, you can't.
You can't what?
You can't, you don't.
I have to, go ahead.
Why?
I'm in a butter?
Yeah, that doesn't make any difference. You don't have a financial interest.
It's all right, I asked town council. I asked town council, he says, this is an interesting factoid, a factoid. I said to him, I'm in a butter, but I have no financial interest in the outcome of this, and he said, the law says that you're deemed to have a financial interest because you're in a butter, except unless you want to give up your equity to the neighbor. I didn't want to do that. So I'm gonna ask you to call it, and then I will follow and stand out.
Re-rule the legal notice.
Right here. Well, you can do it from there.
Okay, being at 8:20 and past the hour of 8 o'clock, I call to order case number 830A, John Bowles, for an appeal of the building inspector's decision for a proposed tow and storage yard at 1 Adams Street.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Go ahead.
Please let the record reflect that I have, I am in a butter to this property, and I am standing down, but as an abutter, I'm gonna remain in the room, and I can speak according to town council if I want to.
Okay, since we have three standing members, Mark and Rod, will you be the other two voting members? Okay, this is for an appeal to the zoning officer's decision. Who is presenting? Name, please?
John Bowles.
Okay. Now, one quick thing, you just marked that you're appealing the building inspector's decision, but there is nothing specific in here as to what you are appealing, so if you could give us a...
Well, I, I'm saying that that property is grandfathered.
How do you make that determination?
Well, it goes back to probably 100 years that there was a garage there, it's been automotive. I've been there 16 years. I've done towing and storage since I've been in there. Before me, it was Watson's Auto Body, and he did storage in that facility for 14 years. Before that, the auto surgeons were in there, and he did 24-hour towing. And before that, I think the guy's name was Jeet, and he was in there so many years. And before that, it was John Dunn's father on the dealership in front of that place, and that was the body shop for the car dealership, the Chrysler dealership, and...
Is there any documentation, is a business certificate or anything with the town that establishes this as a towing lot or a storage lot?
I've had this on my wall for the last 15 years.
No, is there a...
There's no...
...certificate or anything that you have registering as a legal business at that area?
Yes, I got it when I moved in the building. I got it when I moved in the building. It was an auto body shop.
The business certificate?
Yes.
That's on record with the...
Yeah, it's stapled on my wall in the office.
You don't have a copy of that with you?
No, I don't, sir.
All right.
But I got a business certificate to put in the spray booth, to put in the sprinklers, so I'm on top of it.
In Mr. Bernier's letter, and I want, no, I want to draw everybody's attention, well, first of all, draw everybody's attention to letter from Mr. Bowles dated February 21st, 2014, which is addressed to Will and Bernier, Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer. It's a formal letter requesting existing auto body and attached secured lot at 1 Adams Street, Littleton, Mass. be considered for approval as an acceptable facility for the temporary storage of vehicles towed in by this business. Please address any requirements or concerns in writing your consideration of this matter. It's greatly appreciated. In this letter, you're just asking him to request that it be considered for approval? It doesn't say be, no, considered as...
Well, there's no permit for a tow yard. It's just the storage of the vehicles.
Okay.
They've been storing vehicles since the 50s there, as my business and every other body shop that's ever been in there.
All right. Mr. Bernier, though, for the record, responded on February 24, 2014 to John Bowles, 1 Adams Street, Littleton. Mr. Bernier, do you want to paraphrase or, no, your letter? So me reading it, you're here in the audience.
No, you can read it, because I don't know, I don't remember quite everything I wrote in there.
Mr. Bernier writes, Dear Mr. Bowles, this office is a receipt of a letter requesting an opinion regarding utilization of the attached parking lot as a storage yard for tow trucks and vehicle storage. This use would be accessory to the established auto repair. The zoning district is business and village common overlay. Our records show that an attempt to establish a towing service and vehicle storage was rejected in 1991, resulting in agreement to cease the towing activity and restricting storage in the parking area to not more than four vehicles. Site plan review was not conducted. Class II license issued by the Board of Selectment reflected this agreement. After review of the zoning bylaws, it is determined that the proposed tow and storage is a necessary use in the open space adjacent to the auto repair may be permitted, provided a successful site plan review is conducted by the Littleton Planning Board verifying compliance with the bylaws pursuant to Section 173-160 of the Littleton zoning bylaws. Please note that this proposal will also require a water resource special permit from that board. You have the right to appeal this order pursuant to general law. You have the right to appeal this order pursuant to general laws, chapter 48, section 8 and 15 of the Littleton Board of Appeals, provides such an appeal is taken within thirty days from the receipt of this order. Fail to file at time of application is fatal. Sincerely, Roland Bernier, Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer. And let me know that the appeal was taken within the thirty days. What, now, Mr. Bernier, you can give me more light on this or correct me. Mr. Bowles is just saying it's been a repair shop and everything else. Mr. Bernier says, other than that, the towing and the storage is, though, is accessory to that, which has not been legally permitted since 1991. In 1991, in fact, we have documentation attached to this.
There was a permit for used cars. That's all that was permitted for. Nothing to do with the towing and storage, it was on this, it had, he had there in 91, and he left there in 91. That was for used cars, a car permit, nothing to do with towing and storage, that's a used car permit.
Okay.
It was not, that was not accepted. That's all that is. So they still did towing and storage, there's this thing that has a record. Copy of it if you don't want it.
That's an advertisement in the newspaper.
Yeah, well, he did twenty-four-hour towing.
We have further information, I believe, from Mr. Bernier in regards to this. I'm just trying to make sure we have all the information that's been submitted to us on record and for consideration with this board. Along with the application was a quick claim deed. It shows...
I don't believe he was granted the permit for the used cars.
I guess you went to the planning board on February 20th of this year?
Yes, and they told me to come here because they thought I was grandfathered.
Because they thought you were grandfathered, or they said you were not grandfathered?
When I first, when I first wanted to do the towing, chief of police told me that I was grandfathered, I had one truck, I could go on towing, and then it ended up all the way here.
Well, if you're grandfathered, then why is this before the board?
Well, that's what I'd like to know. The place goes back into nineteen, who knows when?
Right. Mr. Bernier has sent a memo to the board dated March 18th, 2014, in regards to 1 Adams Street. Applicant is seeking an appeal from a decision of the Building Commissioner regarding the proposed use of an accessory parking area associated with, and in addition to Jake's auto body. Specifically, Mr. Bowles would like to utilize the parking area as a staging platform for a tow business, storing tow trucks and towed vehicles amounting to perhaps fifteen motor vehicles per week. So far, is that correct?
Yeah, I've been doing towing and storage since I've been there, so has everybody else.
The Building Commissioner ruled that prior to being granted permission to alter and add to the present use of the site with the towing, proposed towing use, site plan review by the planning board pursuant to 173-16 was required to determine zoning compliance, and in the opinion of the Building Commissioner, the proposed activity was of substantial deviation from the original site plan. And he notes in here historically held the Board of Selectmen, revocation, license revocation hearing since 1990, and there's a decision from the Littleton Board of Selectmen, Monday, June 11, 1990. This is the revocation of the licensing. Yes, we have a copy of the ad that you submitted to us. We have a copy of a letter from the Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer, dated July 9th, 1998, to Mr. Philip Warren. Dear Mr. Warren, this office is a receipt of a letter requesting opinion of a retail use of the property known as 1 Adams Street, Littleton, Mass. Please be advised that the proposed equipment rental storage is permitted, that the proposed equipment rental store is a permitted use in B District. As an accessory use, you are proposing to rent Penske trucks and sell propane. After review of the zoning bylaws, it is determined that these accessory uses are permitted. However, site plan review will be required in compliance with section 173-16 and 173-32 of the Littleton zoning bylaws. It is assumed that the truck parking and propane tank will be located in the existing parking area and will require review of that area to determine stability. Sincerely, Roland Bernier. The letter in here from Concord Rental dated Thursday, July 2, 1998, to Mr. Bernier, says that Concord Rental Center is interested in operating its second location, as described. The operation in Littleton would be, we guys at 1 Adams Street, a mirror operation of our present store. We are a top-of-the-line rental operation and had been in business in 1971. So we have, there's documentation in here and noted from years back that it has been known to the operator of that property that a site plan review is required through the planning board under these sections. So, no, and that has not happened. Even recently, the planning board did not go forward with a site plan review, as I understand from their minutes, and put it off until such time you either get a variance from this board or a determination from this board. You keep saying that you've been there operating and everything else, but this documentation shows that might not have been by following all the proper steps, so...
Well, you know, even before I was there, his father did all the towing for the town. They built the police cruisers for the town, they built the ambulances for the town, it's been towing and storage for every body shop that's been in there since unknown, so why wouldn't it be grandfathered?
Sherry?
Ms. Gold?
I've been in a butter to this property for a lot of years now, and there are residential butters to the property that are here probably to be heard also. But I will say, I've been in town about thirty-five years, and as long as I've been here, there have been automotive operations on that property, and the automotive repair and body shop that Mr. Bowles has been running for over sixteen years. Just to clarify what you said, the planning board had an informal discussion in February 20th in 2014. There was nothing that one could point to at that discussion that is controlling of this issue today. Mr. Bowles went before the planning board, and he said, what do I need to do? And the planning board said, well, you're in a water resource district, and if you have a change of use, you need to do a site plan review. Mr. Bowles believes he doesn't have a change of use, he believes this has always been a tow yard. If I look at the record here, and I remember when it was, I don't remember their names, it was a Russian partnership that had...
The Serge.
...second-class motor vehicle operation there, and the selectmen voted to let their license stay in place with no more than four unregistered and seventeen registered vehicles at a time. The back, the back parking area beside the auto body shop is a fenced-in area, it's fenced and screened, and I don't think I've ever counted how many vehicles are there, because you can't see through the fencing, it's, there's always been plenty. Mr. Bowles will probably describe to you that he can't work as an automotive repair shop, as a body repair shop, without towing vehicles in and out. I mean, by definition, a vehicle that needs automotive, auto body repairs can't get there on its own steam, so it's always been towing. You have to tow the vehicle in, it has to sit till you're ready to work on it, you work on it, you put it in the fenced-in area, and you wait till somebody comes and pays for it and picks it up. So, so I think personally, with all of my knowledge of this town and being a neighbor for all these years, there's always been an auto towing feature of this property.
You know, I can understand, you know, that, yeah, for an auto body shop, a vehicle to be towed in, be repaired, and whatever else. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bernier or somebody, what I'm reading in all this is that there's an application to do a towing service and storage, not necessarily that for work being done on the vehicles at that location. To me, that's different, it's a different entity.
I don't think that's what he's asking for. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bowles, but you're going to continue your auto body function...
Absolutely.
On the same vehicles, in other words, are you proposing to tow any vehicles, say the police call, they said, we got a broken-down vehicle?
I will get it.
Put it here until somebody comes and picks it up? Would you be towing any vehicles onto that property and not working on them?
Yes.
This is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Yes. In addition...
Of course, because I get paid for towing and storage.
All right, there's towing and storage.
Which I've already, well, I always do, I do it now.
So it's not, this is, to me, this is what the difference is. Don't lump it together, but to me, it's different, that if you're towing a vehicle in and waiting for somebody to come and haul it away, that's not a towing a vehicle in to be worked on, which is the prime business on the site.
I'm going to do AAA towing. I'm signed up for it. I should, just another few days, I'm going to be doing AAA. So it's, actually, it's good for the town, too, because I can send, say it's a Toyota that I pick up or put to the side of the road, I can bring you the Toyota, or bring it to any of the mechanics that I want to use to bring it to there. So it's generating business for the town also.
Not necessarily, because they can go almost anywhere. Somebody out of state comes and breaks down, they call...
Well, yeah, I get a tow in here and there, yeah, absolutely.
But to me, what has already been established is use an auto body shop at this location, and they have vehicles on site because waiting to be fixed or what had been fixed waiting to be picked up. But what is being proposed is going off the highway or something, towing vehicles in, having it stowed until somebody comes and picks them up, without any auto work being done on them.
I think he would be doing both, and I think he does both now.
I do both.
But the latter of the two, according to what I'm reading, maybe I'm still reading it wrong, you know, has been stated for years that that needs a site plan review under Let me go through the board and see if there are any questions or feelings on this. Mr. Yates?
So what I was focusing on was the Board of Selectmen hearing for the prior person, you know, which was 1990, and I imagine this hearing was instituted because there were complaints from the neighbors. And what they said, four unregistered vehicles for sale, no more than, no more than seventeen total cars, no work done on the vehicles on the, on the street, and that seems like something that you could work in. But what, what they also says, hours of operations shall be seven to six, Monday through Friday, eight to five, Saturday, close Sundays. Could you live with that with your towing business?
It's twenty-four hour.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's a change from what was established...
But it's always been. If somebody called me up at four o'clock in the morning, I'll go get their car.
Okay.
AAA, anything, I'm going to go get their car. If it's smashed and somebody, somebody calls me, I'm going to bring it into my shop, I'm a commercial zone.
Mr. Cantino, or Mr. anything else?
I know, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what's been going on there, and I'm sure we're hearing from the neighbors.
You haven't heard anything from the neighbors since I've been there.
But we had, we go through the steps, we have the board, you presented yourself, we have the board, and then we open up to the general public, or town officials, then general public.
Right, but I don't see anybody here saying anything against me.
Well, they haven't been asked yet, so we went through the boards, questions and concerns first.
All right.
All right, standard format, same standard formality?
I'm, I'm still trying to figure my way through this. I mean, I go way back with this property. I mean, I hear what he's saying, I mean, I, they have been towing there over the years. I mean, I read what the selectmen did back in 1990, you know, I mean, they have A through F here of what they're looking for. Now, has, when you bought this property, how long have you been there?
I don't know the property, I rent the property.
You rent the property?
Yes.
Okay. And you've been there sixteen years?
Yes.
Okay, so sixteen years puts us back after this.
Right, and actually, I did have two permits there, and I was doing repairable cars for four or six repairable cars in the backyard, because I was doing salvage cars, and I had a permit for doing eight cars I could sell.
Okay, now...
So I had two permits. I had the only junk car license that was ever issued in Littleton.
Right.
And that was just given to me because the place is grandfathered, it's been there forever.
All right, I just asked, I just don't...
Right, I'm just, just so you know.
Yeah, I just...
It's kind of odd, because I got a lot tied up in this.
Oh, I know, I know.
It's a business.
My uncle is in the junk business, so I've been there, okay, so...
That was approved by me prior to all this.
Okay.
It's in 1990, pause, I'm going to read it.
All right, I'm with you there, just, 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 now, the other question I have for you, say you are doing this towing, are you, is there more than seventeen cars on the property with the towing service going on? You know, if you were to continue on...
I don't think there'll be that many cars here with the towing going on, because I do so much for Bachwander and Axon Toyota and these other businesses. I might have twenty-five cars on that lot, on my, on my facility.
All right, well, the only reason I'm asking is that one of these requirements was no more than seventeen cars on the site, so I'm wondering how far over that you're going, you know?
Right, that's if I'm real busy, you know?
Right.
But for the, for the towing and storage, usually you get a car and it comes in.
Yes.
You get a towed off the road, the highway, whatever. The insurance company, those cars are totaled, they come getting right out of there, because they got to pay the salvage and the tow when it's towed, you get out of there. So those cars, they leave pretty fast. And for anything leaking or anything like that that comes to my facility, I have a hazardous waste number, I have a, that means gets rid of all oils and fluids that I have on that facility. So it gets leaking, it comes in my facility, I can drain all the fluids out of those vehicles in my facility. If there's a fatality, I have a place to put the vehicles inside the building.
Right.
So on and so forth. It's a six-foot fenced-in yard with lighting...
It's the landlord.
Mr. Dunn, and he's actually here today.
Okay, yeah, all right. Well, I just, I'm listening, I haven't, I'm, I've got enough answers so far, I'm going to need more, but go ahead.
All right, before we go on to the next person, I want to again try to clarify, because apples and oranges and bananas are all being mixed together there.
Okay.
You have a repair business, people bring their vehicles to you, for you to repair, when done, love the lot, and they come and pick them up. This decision from the Board of Selectmen is for a class II license, which is a license to sell vehicles, okay? Another different use, okay? What is being proposed here, and we're at discussion on, is a towing service to tow vehicles to the lot, not necessarily have work done on them, but as a towing and storage. We have three different usage businesses types going on, all right? So the others, the auto repair, yes, that's one thing, that's not part of this, I don't believe, and the class II licensing is not part of this, even though there were conditions in, I guess it's up to the Board of Selectmen for them to enforce their conditions. So let's stick with the question at hand, which is the towing and storage of vehicles not being repaired or having any auto work done on them. Mr. Stewart?
And that's the part I think I'm having trouble with. If he's staging a tow truck there and he's taking the cars to a car dealer or something like that, that's fine, but if he's starting to bring cars that are maybe wrecked cars, and according to the planning board notes saying up to thirty cars in that small lot, you know, that's, I think, something we really need to address.
That's why, if it is truly an accessory, new accessory, and Mr. Bernier has stated many times, and it is in the bylaw, be a site plan review by the planning board to see what hours of operations, how many cars, whether there's fencing, whether there's lighting, whether there's signage, and whatever else, but that is under...
I would agree with that, and I would consider this more an accessory use because of the auto, it's auto body, that's the primary use.
And also, too, with the class II license, that means you can sell cars, but, Mr. Sossia?
Yeah, I tend to agree with your analysis, there are three activities going on, repair, sales, and towing, where you bring cars, that's the sole business, you tow cars in and then they go back out. The first two seem to be addressed in a lot of the previous correspondence. The last one doesn't seem to be addressed there. I think Mr. Bowles' argument is, well, that's what they've been doing all along, so they should be grandfathered. should be grandfathered in. So two questions I have, has that particular activity really been going on all along? And the second question is, even if it hasn't been going all along, what are the particular regulations that says that he can't do it now? If it still stays within some of the parameters that, you know, back in 1991, that the, in terms of the number of cars and hours of operation?
Well, in regards to the towing and everything else, that's why I asked if there's any documentation of that, you know, whether it's a business certificate or something through the town, in which there, there really isn't, okay? There is business certificate and permission and permits in regards to the auto, auto body work and vehicles being worked on, and also, too, for the Class II licensing, selling, so. So, again, here's this third element, and I don't see anything, you know, it may have been happening, it's like people can have not-approved uses going on in a property that nobody knows about or hasn't had town approval until it comes to light and whatever else. Second part of what you just said is that, about what can be done, that's why Mr. Bernier has pointed out a couple times, you need to go to the planning board for a site plan review, that is stated clearly in our bylaw. As a new accessory use on that property, or I should say, maybe, maybe it'd be more correct to say new recognized use on that property. Mr. Trace.
Does this property, but, the town common?
No, there's a building in front of it.
There is a legacy, legacy unit in the town that's getting ready for the 300th anniversary. And one of their complaints is that the sub shop doesn't have an extended sideboard there, and people are packing there. This is not in view with, of the town common, is it? Y'all in?
No, it's on One Adam Street.
No, it's a fenced area. It's right behind it.
Yeah.
Penciled, it's got the shades and the fence.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, so, Bill, you're suggesting they should go, he should go back to the planning board and get a site plan review?
Well, first of all, what's before us tonight, let's keep focused, what's before us tonight, there is a determination for the building commissioner zoning officer that's being appealed. Okay, so I'm not suggesting, I'm just stating what Mr. Bernier has said in his letter, as well as previous correspondence, and what is in our bylaw. I'm just going with that, no, that's up to the board, and Mr. Bowles is saying that he disagrees with that, and that he should not have, I believe what you're saying, you should not have to go to do the site plan review, because his grandfather's been happening all these years and whatever else.
And we can make that determination potentially.
We can make the determination whether we agree or disagree with Mr. Bernier's letter.
Want to hear butters?
Yep, no, that was my next thing, very good, Mr. Bernier. Any butters who want to be heard on this? No acknowledgement through the chair, and state your.
We're supporters, we're not a party.
Okay.
I just like to see fair.
Let me, let me, okay, I'll take one step at a time. Any butters to the property who want to be heard? And, you know, if so, we need your name and your address. No butters, okay? Anybody in the audience who would like to be heard, or whatever else? First, name and address.
All my neighbors like me.
Can you give me a free shirt?
Actually, they bring me.
Go ahead, go ahead, name and address, please.
Wayne Banks Banks Automotive, 245 Gray Road. Been established a business there since 1959, and as far as the use of that property, as far back as I can remember, and I'm sure my dad can remember, it's always been automotive with storage, with towing. You say new use, storage of a car that's been towed in, or storage of a car that he's repaired, that's sitting there for a week and a half. Normally, from my experience, any car that's towed in, either the police department broke down or whatever, they're normally gone the next day, so it's not an extended period of time. Another point is, is you mentioned he's AAA. A lot of my customers are AAA. Local AAA now comes either out of North Andover or way down in North Borough, so that'd be a big help to all of the facilities in Littleton. And I'm sure you can attest, the police department can attest to elderly people sitting on the side of 195 for two or three hours waiting for AAA to show up, and you're right in town, so that's a public service there. So, like I say, as far as I can remember, it's always been towing storage, whether Mr. Watson did it, whether the Russians did it. It's a dip between, you know, new use of storage for a car that's being towed in and not worked on, or storage for a car that's been towed in, worked on, and stored. Stored is stored, though, you know, in my opinion. That's all I can say.
Anybody else?
I'll say something. Hi, I'm Andrea Alvarado, I live at 44 Laxley Street in Littleton, and I came to support Jake because of fair business. There is another stove, tow facility in, in town, and that doesn't meet the criteria of what you need for a tow yard. It's on water, there's no paved lot, the cars are sitting in there, the fluids are drink, you know, they're total vehicles sitting there.
Residential.
They got all, they got all the tow. They got everything, they got the police, the, you know, it's got to be fair business, that's why we came to support Jake tonight, because it needs to be fair.
It's his constitutional right to do business in town.
You know, I agree with this should be fair business, in regards to following the state.
But curbing are issues for one place that doesn't fit the criteria, and then you have a grandfathered business in that can't continue the business? That's why I'm here.
Yeah, I agree, the regulations are there for everybody.
Right.
That's why we're here, to see if it's uniform. If there are other businesses out there that are not operating properly or with a proper review permitting and whatever else, then that's something for the appropriate authorities, whether it's the police department.
But when the authority grants the permit to the illegal facility, how do you fight city law?
We're talking certain different, we're talking different permitting. Permit for one A in the state, a permit is granted for A. Now B is happening.
But that's been there.
The question is, is it the same or is it different?
But that's been there for 50 years, 60 years. This other facility has been changed a venue, and on our water, without a paved lot, sitting there with the fluids leaking in the ground, so.
Then you should file a complaint to the zoning office or allow them to go check it out. Okay, Ms. Gold.
Again, I'm in a butter, I'm speaking as in a butter, and not as a board member, but I think that the distinctions the board is trying to make are, are splitting hairs. I think that this facility has been towing. It has been towing for over 50 years, I've been here 30, and it's been towing for at least 30. There's evidence that came out tonight that it's been 50 years of towing. I think you're splitting hairs when you say towing to your own yard for your own repair versus towing to Toyota because they just moved in next door for their repair, I think you're splitting hairs. Mr. Bowles has always operated with an attention to the neighborhood. The fact that there's not a residential butter here to protest is testament to that fact. He's run a nice clean business. He's never had a complaint, as far as I know. It's clear that even in the 90s, when Anatoly and the partner were operating and there was a complaint about them, they satisfied the selectmen immediately and got the selectmen's approval. No one has ever pulled the license on this facility. And it's been 50 years of a business of operating motor vehicles, towing, repair, service, sales, the whole gamut. I don't see really how you do one without the other. So he's not looking to step up and increase his business. He's not looking to change the yard in any way. He's not looking to add any more impervious. He's saying, let me park my truck there when I'm done towing in the night, and let me store the vehicles that I need to store for the short period of time. If the board feels that they need to restrict it to the 17 or 20 cars that the lot holds, that makes sense. And he's offered that any of the fluids or anything will go interior and be drained appropriately. I don't see why this needs to be made a mountain out of a molehill when it's clear it's got a history. It's got a history that is unrefutable. So for you to say, the history was towing, yeah, Jake, but it was towing for your own repair, not towing for another person's repair, I think you're splitting it here and it doesn't need to be split.
Okay.
Can I speak to?
Yep.
Sheri Gould. I think you're right, Sheri, and I understand that I'm in favor, but I, I think maybe the problem could be that at some point, if there wasn't a butter that starts complaining, I think at some point, this property has to be, if you want to do tow 24 hours a day, somewhere you got to go and get this in writing. And, and I think it might be somewhere, and maybe you have to go to the planning board. I'm, I'm not opposed to extending this thing so it can continue to operate until he can get the proper permits. I understand where the building inspector's coming from, because.
There's no permit for towing.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying, what I'm saying is, so this doesn't come up again in the future, regardless of who's here, if, I think, I think something's missing here, that's what I'm, I'm seeing, between the planning board and the selectmen. For you to have to be here, something like this, and maybe Roland can help you with this, but, I mean, Roland's just doing what he found is a, is a problem with the paperwork. And I, I'm, I agree, I've been in town longer than you have, I go back, and I, it has been towing there. I'm just saying, but to bring this to where we are tonight, this should be cleaned up so that this doesn't continue, you don't have to be here again. If, everybody's unfair of this, which you are, you know, it's, it's been going on, I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I don't have a problem with it. I know what Ms. Gould's saying, why split hairs? Because you could tow that car in there, and who's going to know whether you worked on it, you didn't, and you tow it somewhere else? So I'm just trying to get this so it would be clean all the ways across, without just us saying it's all right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to just suggest two concerns. And one of the reasons I think that Mr. Bowles is here is because I happened to be sitting innocently in that planning board meeting that he was attending when he went for the informal discussion, and the planning board was not able to tell him a direction to go. So he got stuck in this ping pong ball of which board is where, and which board is on first. My fear for him is that if you send him to planning board without a direction from your board, a couple of things could happen. There was just a town meeting vote that said automotive, new automotive facilities are not permitted in that section of downtown. So if the planning board doesn't see some sort of a message from this board that you find a grandfathering had gone on, they could very well say to him, you're out of business, you're not allowed to do that in the zone anymore. And that would be a terrible tragedy for a man who's spent 16 years building a business here. The second thing is, it is a water resource area, I don't really think there's a strenuous objection to the site plan review process, and probably it makes sense to make sure that there's no contaminants going into the soils in that neighborhood. But again, I'm worried that if you don't give a directive to the planning board that you find some sort of grandfathering exists, they're going to say, no, it's a change, it's a significant change of use, we're not going to allow it, and he's going to be in no man's land. So it was my suggestion to him, and I think I spoke to Mr. Bernier about it, not to override the building inspector's determination, but to have the board listen to the facts and the butters, and frankly, I thought there would be Adam Street of butters, and that, you know, if the residents came in and said light, noise, backup beepers, we don't want any of it, but they're not here doing that. So I think it really boils down to the fact of maybe impose, maybe find a grandfathered use and send him to the planning board with his grandfathered use to just have the site plan review, but don't leave him without any decision here.
You know, if I could, if I could summarize on this and everything else, you know, tie the pieces together, and I think that you've brought a very valid point and everything else, that, you know, Mr. Bowles is agreeable and everything else, we could basically agree with Mr. Bernier's decision and say, yes, you do have to go for a site plan review. Now, site plan review of the planning board is not site plan approval. There's a difference, and if all the board members understand. Basically, they cannot deny site plan review. It's reviewing it, making sure that there were some trade-offs, and the screening and the lighting and the protections and whatever else are all there.
It's already there.
I know, but now it's formalized and it's documented and whatever else. And the thing is that, no, yeah, we could, no, send off to the planning board, the statement saying that, yes, we acknowledge that there is an auto body repair shop there, that vehicle's been towed in to be worked on and whatever else, that there's a, had been, covered as a Class II license by the Board of Selectmen, with certain conditions and everything else, for the sale of vehicles that are on property and everything else. Now that we would support the addition to the site of commercial towing of vehicles onto the site, not necessarily to be worked on to the auto body, and I think this is what you're asking for, you know, and we could give support for that, but, no, again, to go through the site plan review, so that it puts to bed the question once and for all, and that somewhere down the line in the future, somebody else, maybe all of a sudden comes in, aggrieved a butter, or somebody else in town, the Russians or whoever they are, which I don't know, can come out and say, oh, yeah, that's not only going, go to Roland again, and they come out and try to shut the business down. I think it's just a matter of touching all the bases, documenting everything, and making sure everything is 100%, you know, covered and authorized.
I have a couple of potential issues. One, if we say agree that this use is grandfathered, I'm finding a little trouble saying, the use is grandfathered, but you have to go get a site plan review, because I think that might be.
Let me clarify, I'm not saying that that is grandfathered, but the grandfathering there has been a similar towing operation of bringing vehicles onto this.
I understand, but the length of time is such that it may apply to the site plan as well. Secondly, if he goes for a site plan review, he's going to find, he's going to be back here for variances for probably lot area setback, things like that, because he's, I'm sure the setbacks do not conform to the bylaw.
But if it's already no grandfathered, and it's questioned grandfathered, saying, what's already going on there is grandfathered, so the longer he doesn't go outside the parameters of that, then a future variance would not be required. As Mr. Bernier comes up with something and says, that's not, not right, and I don't believe that anything else would, any other variances would be required because they could not go outside that parameter, because he's not adding property, not expanding the parking area and everything else, based on what has been presented tonight. Mr. Sossia.
Yeah, I think, with all due respect, it is a slightly different business of just towing cars in and then putting them back out. I'm not saying I have a problem with that. I do agree with John, though, is that there's enough other documentation that if it isn't settled in this case, it's going to come up again. I mean, in particular.
No, if you grandfather it.
Well, well, let me finish, that's what I mean, that has to be found, has to be documented and all, that's just, to be honest, everybody's saying it is not.
But there's no complaints about.
Let me finish, let me finish, I'm actually arguing in your, in your favor, let me get there. The problem is, you got that 1991 memo or whatever that says your hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. during the week, and on Saturdays, 8:00 to 5:00. That tells me that someone could say, hey, you can't tow a car in there at 2:00 in the So again, it, it, I'm not saying you shouldn't be doing what you're doing, I have no problem with it, especially, obviously, your neighbors don't either. But for your own protection, so you don't do this again in two years, three years, now's the time to clear it up and make sure we have it documented so that you can continue doing the business you're doing.
I, Madam Chair, I mean.
No, I'm not in a but.
Ms. Gould, I, I mean, I, probably you could help us get to that point, too, along with Bill, but.
Mr. Bernier.
Okay, my turn.
Yes, sir.
I also have been here 30 years as building inspector and zoning officer, and I have been required in my capacity and in that capacity to visit the site on many occasions, do complaints and issues. There was only one time was there a shingle that was hung up over the door for towing service, and that was auto surgeons, and that was around 1990, 1991, when all that issue came up. Do you want a grandfathered, I don't care. That's not the purpose of my memo. My memo is to satisfy the planning board, which wants to see the site. Their site's in a water resource district. Their site's in the Water Resource District, and it has to be protected, and that's what we're doing. If you look at the section for site plan review...
Yep.
There's two reasons why I can send him in front of site plan. The first is if you modify, add, change the parking area, okay? You can determine that or not, I don't care. The second is whether I feel as though it's necessary. If you wish to grant a decision tonight's grandfathering this gentleman, he still has to go to site plan review under that second sentence. I have to send him.
Yeah.
So I don't care what you do here tonight, you know, and I'd love to see Mr. Bowles go forward and have a towing service, I don't really care. But site plan has to take place.
So do we have the right to grant 24 hours' use? Or is that site review?
He's not here for that.
If not before this.
Okay.
All we're here to do is to uphold Roland or not, that's all we, I, do we even have standing to grandfather?
We can do a statement saying that we're upholding Mr. Bernier's determination, as stated in his letter of February 24, 2014, and we can acknowledge that by information and evidence presented to this board for review and testimony given, that, no, there has been grandfathered the use of the auto body, or vehicles have been towed into the property for the auto body and stored in the lot until such time the customers pick them up, and that there is a class two license for sale of vehicles on the property and storage of such vehicles. In addition, note for the towing of vehicles, the proposed use of towing of vehicles onto the property, not necessarily for auto repair work or vehicle work, no, that, no, to go for a site plan review. As Mr. Bernier just said, that we can, the other option is not to go along, well, the other option is just say, "Yes, Mr. Bowles, everything you presented is grandfathered, thank you very much, go away." Mr. Bernier is still going to say, "You have to go to the planning board." When he goes to the planning board, they are looking for, basically, they are looking for us to make the statement that I just made in regards to the grandfathering.
They sent me here, because they sent out his grandfather.
Yeah, according to the minutes, and I think the minutes are a little vague, it just says that, "Review the determinations by the appeals board." So, yeah, I understand, they sent you here.
How far do I got to go back and forth, because it's like...
Once, once we, if we do what I had just suggested, and then you go to the planning board, that should be it, not bounce back here, unless all of a sudden something comes up that's not recognized at this point, if you should need a variance.
Mr. Chair, if you, if I may, just speak as a butler and a resident, and for Mr. Bowles' information. I just did a similar project for somebody on the other side of town where the use was preexisting and the building was preexisting, but because it was going to change from whatever, a new tenant, the planning board required site plan review. Their site plan review was minimal. It did require the engagement of an engineer, and the engineer had to show them on the site where the drainage is, where the impervious surfaces were, and that there would be no additional impervious surfaces. But the planning board was very reasonable in asking for small improvements to the roof runoff and drainage, acknowledging that, under the zoning bylaw, a preexisting situation is grandfathered and doesn't need to have major changes done in site plan review. I think it's a little different than what you might have experienced at the garage when you were doing the restaurant, because that was a major change to have food service there.
Right, right, right.
So I don't think it would be that extensive. It'll cost a little bit, you'll have to get an engineer, Mr. Bowles.
But I think it's...
Yeah, but no, no, that's like $30,000 to do all this.
No, I don't think so. The engineering we just did was under ten.
And I think it covers all the bases, so that it puts the bed once and for all, no, the sole issue, and there's not going to be any problems coming up in the future. I mean, otherwise, my feeling is that if we say, "Yeah, everything you presented is grandfathered," no, it's still going to raise questions later on, based on some of the documents that have already been in here. I think for your own protection and your own comfort level, you really should go through this process. And as Ms. Gould just said, it'll be minimum. She's very knowledgeable in that area, and she can probably give you advice.
Assistant says a neighbor.
No, I know what's involved, and what's got to be put in there, and what Roland was telling me, it has to have a ditch in there.
No, I didn't tell you that. I don't know what it means, honestly, I really don't.
Okay, then, we'll go through the planning board and ask them what they want me to do. When does this happen?
Right. Why could they kick, why didn't they, I don't know. That, that's why...
I don't understand why.
They had an informal discussion with him, he was unrepresented at the time. Planning board was short a member, you know, a decisive member, and so the rest of the planning board was listening to him, and they, there really was nothing in front of them. So they didn't give him a direction because they didn't really have anything in front of them.
So, I mean, he's basically, we're looking for a grandfather of the tow.
I think if this board comes out with some sort of language that the board finds, from the evidence, as Bill said, I wrote some of it down, from the evidence and the testimony, that there seems to be a grandfathered activity going on here of towing, that I think he can then get to the planning board for site plan review. I think it will satisfy the Water Resource District in that no runoff's going to go where it shouldn't go, and impervious will be fine, and I think Mr. Bernier will be satisfied because he wants him to have site plan review. And I will, as a neighbor, as a friend, I'll address the planning board with Mr. Bowles if you want, tell him...
No, the other one's more, Mr. Chair, I don't know if everybody's leaning toward the grandfathering on the board, and the reason I'm saying that is, we do have the landlord here, if you think we need more input from him, because he goes back into the 50s or 60s with the property. It was the done property, it was a car dealership back in the 60s. I mean, I know this background, I'm just saying if you could speak more on behalf of it.
He did the total for the town as well.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay, there were uses of properties, and some of them were appropriate or legal, approved, and some just happened. People do it all the time, businesses do it all the time. They do it, whether it's approved, meets the bylaw or not, I really don't want to open up that can of worms, okay? Because then, once it comes to, like, there are a lot of things that happen in town, any town, that the police department don't know about, because it hasn't been brought to their attention, they can't afford, the building inspector's zoning officer doesn't know about it because it's not specific to his attention, you know, and you just let it go until somebody raises a big red flag. I, I see some stuff in this document that could raise some flags, I don't think it's everybody's best interest to go there. Based on, here's a class two permit issued by the board of selectmen, here is this and everything else, all the documentation, I don't think you want to go there. I think, still, in your best interest, long-term and everything else, no, to satisfy everybody, would be for us to do, uphold Mr. Bernier's law, or not to go against what he put in his law, to say, yes, that we've established, and we agree the use is currently going there, as I stated, the auto body shop, the vehicle's on site, the B we've worked on, what's it worked on, and still, to be waiting, to be picked up by the owners, you know, that kind of stuff and everything else, yes. So that the board of selectmen can then, and now the board of selectmen, and then you do need to go for a site plan review under the zoning bylaw, and then to go to the planning board. And I think they will be satisfied, from what I have heard and what I have read in the documentation, they will be satisfied that they can do what they need to, without causing you a lot of headache and a lot of expense, and then bases are covered, and everybody would be well and better off at that point. So, what, do you need further discussion?
Yeah, we issue special permits, variances. How do we deal with this? I don't, I can't remember that we issue grandfather...
It is not a special permit or variance requested from the board.
Right, so what do we, what are we issuing here?
One, we just issue a statement in regards to Mr. Bernier's letter, and then we can issue, as part of that, a, an add-on comments that, no, we, with the uses that have been going on, that are going on currently today, and have been long-term and therefore grandfathered.
Okay, so we're just dealing with...
That's what he originally asked us to do.
But there's, I don't think there's a question where the, it's in a lot, if some new person came along, it's a lot of use, and that's how, as I understand it.
It's always been there. It's not far out.
Is the, is this towing?
Towing for vehicles that have been being worked on.
That's what kicks this out.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think you're in jeopardy of being kicked off that site for this business.
No, no. Let me explain what it is. In the town of Littleton, I was told that I have to have a yard in Littleton to tow for the town of Littleton.
For the police department.
So I was told to put in this oil trap or whatever I have to do, so I said, "Okay", and I want to expense up $30,000, whatever it was, so I got a yard over in there. I wanted to get that yard over in there, so you get the police tow. Two weeks later, they tell me, "Oh, you can't tow in the town of Littleton because you don't have a yard in Littleton."
Your yard on Adams Street wouldn't qualify?
I guess, uh...
Is that towed to...
Because he towed me a 2W R car, and I'm insured there for a 3 and 3, if anything goes on the property.
You're just, you're just confirming what my suggestion is, you know, is that it'll put, that kind of a discussion, so it won't come up.
Let's look at where the town got the tow in right now, and the only yard. It's in a residential area, right? Am I right, it's on Mill Street, residential area, two ponds, right? The church is in the front there, there's a, in the back, there's two old age homes, and that's where the towing yard is, and that's okay? But me, I go for this, and this is what I get? The place has been there since 1903. It's grandfathered. Everybody's been towing this, it's his father, John Dunn's father towed and did all the police tows for the town of Littleton. He built the police cars for the town of Littleton. I don't see what the problems are having it.
If you get a statement from the board of grandfathered, the planning board has to do a minimal work, minimal work with you. There's an argument about whether or not they can, they can and do, can do anything, but I guarantee you the planning board will just look at this and make sure that you don't have any toxic materials going into the ground in a water resource, so, and it won't be an expensive...
We're not the ones that are now, already.
Well, that'd be another issue.
That was granted by the building inspector, the permit was granted, and the site was checked.
It's okay. I'll go to the bottom of the...
I understand your frustration.
I will go, you know, this is a very expensive thing here. I got $100,000 worth of trucks sitting down there, and they're not being used, and it costs me $3,500 a month for them to sit there, and I come in front of you, and this is what I get? That place was so grandfathered.
But, but, thought of mine may be all that you should have been to do the site plan review for the planning board before you spent the money on the trucks and started paying all of that.
No, I was told it's grandfathered.
I was by the chief of police told me.
And what's, what's very common, businesses don't understand zoning, residents don't understand zoning.
I don't see any residents here complaining about it.
So it's, we're still trying to set the record straight and get it so that everything's up and up and appropriate for you to proceed with this business. We're trying to work with you so that you don't have any problems later on, so that, like you said, you get all this, and all of a sudden, three months later, somebody tells you, "You can't do it." We're trying to put the rest so that doesn't happen. We're working on your behalf.
Okay. I'm going to go with the tolls.
Thank you.
But just move on with it, that's all.
I think we've, everything now is kind of going in circles, I don't hear anything new. Mr. Kent, you...
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All right. Okay. We will make a determination, we will send out a determination, you'll be copied on it, you'll get the information, and at this point, if you get any questions, you can check with Mr. Bernier and through Michelle.
All right. How long will it take? Thank you for your time.
Soon.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We need to vote on the motion to close.
Okay. Motion's have been made, and seconded to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Bill, are you going to write the letter?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will close the hearing, we haven't taken, we're going to go with it.
So the meeting's still going, we're still going to vote on this tonight, right?
That's new.
Yeah.
So that's why, you know...
I don't know, we've been telling you, storing cars after a long time. Does he want to stay? But it doesn't.
But I can also see his frustration.
Oh, yeah.
He's now going to have to spend a lot of money, so.
I think all we...
I'd be frustrated.
Only to close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Absolutely, and of course he's upset.
Yeah, let's, let's deal with one Adam Street. Again, I don't know if anybody needs it restated or whatever else, but it's the board's pleasure, or does anybody want to make a motion?
You said some stuff earlier that was a good form, a beginning of a motion, maybe you should just continue that.
I would, okay, I would entertain a motion to uphold the determination letter from Roland Bernier, building commissioner, zoning officer, and to acknowledge based on evidence and information and discussion at this hearing, that there has been a long-time-standing use of the property as a repair facility for vehicles, in which vehicles are towed in, stored in the lot until such work is done on them, and then stored in the lot until such time. The owners have come to reclaim their vehicle. That there is information, given that the business operator, he's not the owner of the property, Mr. Bowles is looking to increase the towing by having towing vehicles onto the property, not necessarily for work on them, but to a, such length of time, such that the rightful owners or another party comes to claim them. And that, you know, in agreement with Mr. Bernier and under the town zoning bylaws, section 173 to 16, that a site plan review is required for this additional use on the property.
Mr. Vice Chair, I...
Is that good?
Well, it sounded more like a traitor's...
Are you putting grandfathering in the...
There's a motion that with an attachment, a statement of the grandfather.
Finding of grandfathered.
All right, that's fine, yep, as long as it's grandfathered.
Yep.
Okay. I'll second that.
Will you say something?
I can't make it, I'm accepting the motion, so somebody needs to make it and then...
Are we discussing or are we just voting?
Go ahead and discuss.
All right, I'd just say, "So moved."
Oh, yes.
Well, we need something, first of all, we need somebody to make, say, "Yes, they're making the motion," and then somebody to second, then we'll have the discussion.
Are we being, are we in...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so essentially, we're voting to uphold the letter?
No, first of all, I said, I said I was accept the motion, I'm waiting for somebody to actually say, "Yes, they're making the motion."
I'm so moved what he said.
Okay, right. Okay, do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, because we're all the second, we don't go any further. Okay, any discussion on what the motion or the findings?
Okay, where does the claim of grandfathering come into that motion? I still have a little bit of a problem with grandfathering, because in his own words, he says he's started, essentially, well, not the words, but he's opening, or he's putting in a tow yard. He wanted, he put one in in there, it didn't work, now he's putting one in here.
Well, the grand...
So that means, if he's putting in one, that means it didn't exist before. If it didn't exist before, then it's not grandfathered.
The use of the vehicles towed in not being worked on by him is still on the same property, the same lot where he is currently using, so he, my understanding is, he's not expanding the lot. It's still in the same parking area.
Yeah.
The main difference is that the vehicles towed in not with, not with the intent of him working on them. To me, there's, that's the difference, towing and storage until somebody else, whereas before, any repair garage, you bring, you drop off your vehicle, maybe the next day or so, it goes into the garage, get worked on, it gets done, you're back out, wait two or three days for somebody to come and take the vehicle back home. That's the difference.
Is...
This is a, you know, it's not a good situation for people to look at. But notwithstanding what we say, my understanding is that he'll have to go through a special permit, notwithstanding whatever we say today.
No, no, I don't think so.
Well, Roland's telling us that-
No, no, site plan review is not a special-
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. Site, site plan review. So I'm swayed by, you know, John's, John sort of was saying that, you know, well, this doesn't seem like, you know, we can't really grant him relief, you know, from this site plan review.
No, we can't.
So our only statement is upholding Roland and saying that we do believe that there is a grandfathered use, an automotive grandfathered use.
Right.
That's it. And it's up to the planning board.
Well, I don't know if we have to state that. All we've got to do is either uphold or not his letter.
We've been asked, we've been asked.
Basically, the planning board did not want to make a determination on use of the property, whether it's grandfathered or not grandfathered, or whatever else, okay? They didn't want to make that, because it's not their purview, and that's why they basically suggested to him, come to this board, so that we could say, yeah, we agree, the use that's going on has been grandfathered, and now you're just going to add this one little add.
But we're also saying that the towing storage is grandfathered, right? Because that's been going on for a long time as well.
Towing and storage for vehicles that he works on.
What about those that he doesn't work on?
But now that there is an element that he's going to be tow, we're not saying that's grandfathered.
Well, then, we're saying it's new use.
All we're saying is that there's been towing going on, it's been grandfathered over years.
There's been a towing is incidental to it.
All the other stuff, the hours and operation, that really doesn't have anything to do with it.
Well, that's where the site plan review comes in.
It'll be subject to-
That'll be up to them, how they want to deal with it.
I mean, towing has been going on, that's, to me, obvious, there's your grandfathering for the fact that towing goes into that property. All the rest, that's up to selectmen and the planning board, I would think.
Yeah, but if we don't say, find that the towing and storage of non-serviced vehicles is grandfathered, then the board, then the planning board is going to say, in that overlay district, it's not allowed, and he's going to be denied.
See, they don't make that determination. They properly, no, if they, if they were to operate within the confines of the legalities of 40A, and the special permit, which is not on that, and it's just site plan review, which is not site plan approval, two different things dramatically, it's site plan review only. All they can do is work within that kind of confine. They cannot make the determination whether it's not allowed or not, or is allowed or whatever else.
Well, I think the site plan is-
It's not their purview. It's just matter, okay, here's somebody in front of me, here's what he's going to be doing, he's going to have vehicles on here, okay, on the site, here's how we protect the site.
They would be asking, Roland, it, it is an approved, a tow yard is, it's an allowed use?
That's a big question.
Okay. So it's not, so it's not an issue about whether it would be allowed? Because it would be allowed.
That's not even the purview of the planning board.
It's a question of, it sounds like it's more of the water resource issue.
Yeah, well, I don't know. The planning board makes a determination of allowed use in the zoning district.
They don't make determination of use. That's not their job or responsibility.
Well, sure it is. They'll, they'll say, a store is not allowed in a residential zone. They'll make that zoning determination.
They don't make zoning determination.
And they'll deny the site plan.
Wait a minute, let me say it one more time. Planning board does not make zoning determination. That's the zoning board of appeals. They review the site plan.
Yeah, the building inspector.
If they stay within their purview, that's not up to them to come out and say. They're just looking at the site and how it's being treated to protect the ground and the location.
Well, I know, when I was on the board, we'd look at it and say, you know, determine if it was an allowed use in that.
Well, the board does a lot of things, but no, if it's done properly, they-
I make the determination.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Can we get to a vote on this? Any further discussion?
Rod said so moved. I second.
And he seconded, well.
Right, right, I know. We have, that's what I'm saying. Most have been made by Rod and seconded by John. All in favor? Sign them up by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay.
You might want to put with words by Bill for the motion.
Can't do that one.
Good job.
Oh, poor Mr. Bowles.
I thought all those people were riding the street of butters.
Yeah, I know. That's what I thought.
I did too.
I mean, I'm still concerned that that 1991 letter with the hours of operation, someone can come down on him and say, hey, what are you doing towing two in the morning? Says right here.
The 91 letter is-
We're not grandfathering that.
91 letter is a selectman's decision to grant a second, a second, what do you call it, second class license?
Class II license, yeah.
Class II license. It has nothing to do with his business.
You know, I've run into that.
License restriction.
I've run into that, an operation in North Grove, where the issue, not more than 18 vehicles on the lot drive by, and you could tell 19, 20, 25.
Well, yeah.
All of a sudden, and the police are the ones who enforce it. They went over, and they shut this guy down and everything else. You sold the business, somebody else came in.
She'll be exhausted, she knows that. That's postpone elections, everybody all right with that, postpone elections for next month.
I do have a couple announcements before we-
Sign all of them, because Omni wanted one paper, one back. I had to get one paper, one.
Okay, so we have four, Cheryl's not here, four of us have voted that should sign it.
I have a couple of things, though, that I do need to bring to the attention of the board before.
Are we closing them?
No, we're not closing them.
All right. I didn't know if they-
All right. In regards to the previous case that we had, which was Allen versus Levalry of Tehadawon. This is where the Allens said that there's a contractor yard beside them. They went to Roland. Roland wrote a determination that to refine any violation of zoning bylaw. Allens came to us as an appeal to Roland's decision. We upheld Roland's decision. Allens took it to court. All right? This has been going on, and now finally, and I got an email from Chris Heap the other day, saying the case has officially been dismissed, and the ZBA decision is now final.
That's good news.
Yeah, so that, so that is a good thing.
Where was that on? Tehadawon.
Tehadawon?
Where?
Number 70 and 76, Tehadawon.
That's a nice figure.
Yep.
There's a lot of animosity.
Yep, so that, I guess they've reached an agreement, whatever else, but the decision is, is done and dismissed, and, you know, actually, it was a court case between the two parties. The town was not a party in this, but it still came out and confirmed that our decision is final, and Mr. Burnier's decision is final, so. One other thing I want to bring up and mention, because this is kind of a pat on the back to this board, we just finished 15 Great Road. All through the hearing, there was a young lady who'd been sitting up back, by the name of Jennifer Girard, who was a graduate student doing work at Brandeis University, and she'd been going to this town and several, a few other towns, listening to the process on how the board deals with 40B, because she's doing a thesis on this and everything else. You know, to get, and she says that her goal is to get a full and unbiased view of 40B proceedings through this. Well, now that we're done and everything else, I know there was an email from Michelle that was sent out to all board members last week, March 5th, saying Jennifer would like to meet with any of us who'd be interested, so she could pick your brain and whatever else. I did meet with her this afternoon and met, talked to her for a couple hours, very informative on my behalf and whatever. She hasn't heard from anybody else, so if anybody else is still interested, she's open to talk to anybody who wants to. One thing that she did say, and I asked her if I could pass the comments on to the board, and she said, by all means, that of the towns that she sat in on and everything else, she thought that Littleton's zoning board was the most professional, the best run, really applauded because, because we had, we listened and had a consultant, Ed Marshon, we had town council here, we had staff members, Mr. Burnier, and the way the whole thing was conducted, run, questions, the demeanor and everything else of this board, she said was exceptional, and by far better than any of the other town boards, and those only boards that she sat in on.
So give yourselves a hand.
You know, that's what I said this afternoon, I said, I got to pass it on to the board if you don't mind, and she said, by all means, make sure that it gets passed on to the board.
So with those other towns.
I do have to say to all of you, as my colleague, it's a pleasure to be here, because we are respectful toward one another's differences, and there's no other board in town, I think, that respects each other's personalities and differences and political differences. We are truly a board that is open-minded and, open-minded, I mean, we listen to each other.
On the other hand, she wasn't there at the beginning of the first hearing we had.
We got the other.
She also, she also liked, and it was very unique, is that at the very beginning, there was a public information meeting with Ed Marshon and anybody else, and Ed, several times of that, and the very person we had here in regards to it, where it says, here are the ground rules. Here's the guidelines by the state, here's what the board can do and cannot do. And I know, Sherry, you reiterated that many times with some of the comments coming up and everything else, and she, she thought that was quite well done.
And we have Keith to thank for that. Keith was a great facilitator in making sure that we had the right counsel, the right guidance, and they made that available for us. And Keith got the grant to allow Ed Marshon to work with us. So we have Keith to thank for that.
Now, with that said, did she make any comments on the qua, well, for lack of a better word, the quality of the applicant? I mean, I don't have a lot of experience in it, but I thought that 15, they were, you know, I always felt they could have come in here and say, hey, screw you guys, we